Yeah.
That long?
No. And what?
What about there?
My review?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It was on the tractor.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't know.
Morning.
Good hang.
Well, maybe if so, yes. But maybe.
Yeah. Huh? I mean, apples.
That's my guess.
What's that? What?
Mountain.
The weekend.
Right there.
Yeah. But.
I think it's stand out. The pose.
Hmm.
That's. Basically. So.
It's the same.
Year, two to three years for. Same continue the feed. And truly. Think that's like it's a matter of how. For.
Morning, Steve.
I'm filling a man. It should be over real quick.
Conversation.
I won't eat much time.
Just like that, so.
And I want. But. I do. This is state. Yeah. I just been confused.
How are the better certain with new towers now have you noticed?
Yeah, there's been significant improvement. You know, things are never as perfect.
Perfect world.
But um, big shock. Turns out the sales pitch might have been a little bit inflated, but is it a massive improvement?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's a it's a major. Yeah, it. We got done what needed to be done. I would say, uh, what's the word they use? The end of a project, um, substantially. I would say it is substantially improved and substantially better. I would say it falls short of the mark they sold, but it's yes, it's yeah.
Learn topography, though. Yeah, you, yeah, you'd have to have one every. Yeah. That's not. Every couple miles up there, especially north.
I don't think it's all short enough of what they sold that we would have any. To come back on, I mean, it's mostly.
How many dead spots do we actually have?
I mean.
Dead spot.
What?
Define dead spot, like no coverage or.
There's always.
Yeah, it's hard to say, because even atmospheric notions. We fully. Yeah.
Yep.
On the bit, you know, there's very few places where you can fail nothing, but it'll skip out a little bit. It's a it's a that's not trying to dodge questions, Steve, we're gonna dodge that question, because I don't know how to answer.
Good. Who sent my phone to mess?
Yeah.
About it.
Yeah.
November first through uh, March thirty first is a lot better.
Yes, it is, actually. Yes, sounds are.
Used to go. All the plans to say way over here, you get down this. Winter time, you should almost get.
Yeah, when those those leaves get thick, it starts. And we do notice certain days. Always like a dream. Other days were like, what in the heck? And it's just the atmosphere. Yeah, so.
My bike doesn't fall somewhere. In our land.
She have.
There's a couple miles of river road, it's probably just the hardest. Yeah.
But that's why I wanted to.
Yeah.
To get away from everything.
Well, truly, yeah. Yeah, that's the.
Stop thinking around.
No, it's not. That's what that's what.
And we still all chose to move here for that.
Exactly.
I never choose to.
But to.
It shows me.
Projecting.
It shoots there.
Part of.
It choose to stay.
There you go.
All right, nine thirty, uh, all of its own teams, we say, on to allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the meeting to order with everyone present as a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. If you choose not to be recorded, you have the option of leaving. First item on the agenda this morning, Sean Snyder, Police Management Coordinator, nine one one tower payments.
Well, thank you, uh, thank you for your time, supervisors. Uh, I did bring my uh, volunteer assistant with me as well, Sheriff Dan Marks, in case there's any questions that I want to defer to him. But I do want to come and first of all, say thank you for uh, your assistance with the tower project. We started back in twenty twenty one, was it? Twenty something somewhere near. Uh, got some. Going to share some good news with you as well, so I've got some final numbers for you guys, so uh, I'm gonna take you back in time. Uh, the original estimated project total was three million, five hundred, nine thousand, five hundred dollars, if you remember that. Uh, our total for the Raycom side came in at three million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty one dollars and four cents. Now, that looks like a good savings right there, about two hundred and ninety five thousand, but remember, Dan and I, we were the project managers on the fiber piece of it. We took the microwave piece out of the project and decided to go to in-ground fiber to each one of the locations. We feel that was a much better way to do it, uh, due to the maintenance, ongoing maintenance of having microwave dishes on all the towers. So for that piece of the fiber piece that Dan and I managed, that was two hundred and sixty six thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents. So all in all, we came in twenty nine thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and sixty six cents under budget. Which in today's world, to come in under budgeted project of that magnitude, I consider that a success. So I know there's a lot of numbers to throw at you, but I wanted to share some good.
I would point out Mark Vick was very instrumental in. Through a lot of this as well, and especially securing the land. And we had a, a little bit of a bout, uh, trying to switch it from microwave to fiber in the type of a fiber network we wanted to do. Um, but we got our way and it's worked very well. And uh, and also fiber is a lot less susceptible to uh, weather. I mean, obviously, somebody digs in their backhoe or something, yeah, we're more susceptible, but I mean, at least that's controllable, weather is. We're not relying on addition, that's two hundred.
Yeah, I mean, uh, in the fiber world, we're really only susceptible to what they call this backhoe induced faults. So as long as we can avoid those, uh, we're we're in good, good shape, but uh. So that leaves, uh, I reached out to Raycom and you guys will remember, there are two payments left for the project, one here in July of nine hundred thousand dollars. And then uh, the final bill uh, in July of twenty. Seven, twenty six.
Twenty six.
Uh, would be thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty one dollars and four cents. Um, and I would leave this, maybe Ben can chime in here, however you guys want to do it. Uh, they're not charging us interest, so we could pay it off early, uh, in July, or we could wait and pay the final payment, uh. Next one, however you guys want to handle it. Really up to you guys.
If it works either way, like he said, we're not paying interest, um, we do want to pay extra with both. You and the man of your budget to give the money to Sean, and then Sean will have to mend his budget to pay it off, and it's only thirteen thousand, so. It isn't a lot of money, you know, it'll come out of your pending fund balance in. In that fund, but next year you may have, you're going to have to set your levy rate higher, make payments. Or set your levy rate higher to make up the money that you spent that you weren't planning to, so in the end. Really has no effect on the taxpayers.
Said that much more. I guess, uh, I'll work with Ben and Tony, uh, I reached out to Raycom to send, to email me the nine hundred thousand dollar invoice for July's payment. And I let them know that it might be a decision for you guys to make, uh, if you want to include that final payment. And uh, that just kind of worked out to Raycom, I would just kind of handwrite that additional thirteen thousand on there and then. Send them one check if you guys want to pay it off early.
Do you have any input on that?
Thoughts?
If I clean, if I can clean it up and we're done, it'd just be.
One less thing to do.
One less thing, I mean, it's probably a little more munking around doing it, but I don't know, what do you?
I would say, I would say if we have the money, we should do it. This is yours compared to this.
Just be done, cleaned up.
I think we all agree on.
Behind this, yeah.
I have to do a budget amendment for the commission on a different project later this calendar year, so I'm already planning on doing one, so I can add this in, it's not. An increased amount for me, Ben said he usually does one every year as well, so. And then when I come to you guys to, for budget work on uh, on the commission's behalf here later this calendar year, then we'll be able to reduce my. Uh, task by substantial amount, so I will save you guys money. It's nice. Budget session as well.
Mark, do you want my review for the public and for people in the room? How much we saved compared to other counties on this tower project?
I mean, I can give a foul, I ain't gonna give you a number, because I have no, you know, I mean, just what what you hear through. It's just what you hear through people saying.
Several million.
I can't, yeah.
I can tell you.
It's probably eight to ten million they were spending, and we've got. Well, we've got three point two here and we had the other one out there, so we're safe, well, we paid as we went, put it that way. And most of them probably just not just saying they may have to do a bond issue to do theirs. That's, that's all I could, you know.
Where the two, like, few were prior.
Yeah, that's. Yeah.
Yeah, twenty seventeen, I think it was one point seven for the, the major.
Yeah, that's what I.
And I'm still paying a, a month or an annual payment on that, that's separate from this project, but between the one point seven and the three point two.
Five point, well, five point two.
Well, I would.
Five point two on the whole deal put together.
Yeah, I mean, if you compare that five point two to, to what we're hearing other counties spending upwards of here in anywhere from eight to ten million. But I would argue that that five point two to, you know, so you're looking at a three, four million dollar difference. I would argue that it's potentially a bigger difference than that, because how many of those counties also did a project in twenty seventeen? Before they started going to this new system? So, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I think you could probably make an argument for a good number of counties that that three to four million dollars in savings is very light. Because they also had the same project, so.
Back during that we paid no interest.
Right, yeah, that's the huge.
In almost every county that I'm aware of is going to a bond.
Uh, there.
Central services bond, I, I don't know enough about.
You have another thirty percent on it right there.
To keep it cleaner, I think just we'll pay them nine hundred thousand like you're planning to have them send them, send us another invoice for that.
Okay.
It might get paid like a different claim session, but then it'll, we can record that as your last payment just to, so kind of clean it up.
So you do that for you.
Yeah.
Then we'll be done with that Au- August, is that?
October.
October, you done with that one then?
Yep, that uh, tower, we're not using anymore, we're selling that tower, at least. We tried ten different ways to get out of it, and it just couldn't, so.
That's like twenty some.
Twenty two hundred.
Yes, that's a painful invoice.
Yes. What if you don't? Yeah.
So that'll be a big.
Yeah, that'll be.
Savings savings.
Yeah.
Now, we tried, Andy wrote him a letter, there was just, they weren't budget. And we, we did sign the lease.
Yeah.
Uh, and then Senate File Sixty Five Nine was signed by the governor, um, so that, that is, that will be in effect July first. That's the one, if you remember, where uh, the state. May send the bill to the nine one one service boards for a reasonable amount, we do thirty days to pay it, so. Don't need much more.
The figure of monthly tower.
Yeah.
That bill is going to have a significant impact on the nine one one budget, which is already, um. Um, if you look at five to six, eight year projections, it's not looking well.
I think the, the state has their early projections, the.
Twenty six, I think, for Winnipeg County and. We were asking live webinar last week, and there was little to no indication that they weren't coming calling for that twenty six thousand. And uh, I, I got little indication that that was on maybe.
Yeah, how much is that monthly tower, I mean? Twenty two hundred, so that basically.
The question was asked in that webinar, how counties are supposed to maintain their nine one one services? Um, and uh, without basically. Uh, getting. Trying to think of a word, but without basically going along with what's, how can you maintain our independent nine one one services, I'll leave it at that. And basically, the answer was that was not the state's problem, they were going to use the money for what they needed it for, they would recall whatever on a market they needed. And if the counties wanted more money, they'd love, they could levy for it.
Six five.
Yeah.
Yes.
That question was brought up too. So. Is that fair?
Yeah. Yeah.
To make sure I'm not misleading, but that's certainly how I heard it.
Would that money come out of the funds?
It's supplemental.
So payments.
Weekend, which is eleven.
Yeah.
Anything else for me? I don't want to take up, uh, that much more important general, I'm waiting to get into these.
How did they, on that, there was that dower, wasn't there, it'd be a surcharge, something, and that just kind of.
Yeah, so all, all throughout the session, being in the, in the nine one one, we're, we're trying to get them to raise, right now it's a dollar surcharge. We're trying to get them raised to a dollar twenty five, and uh, uh, it was, it was a non-starter, because they looked at it as raising taxes, um, so they. Did this, just didn't do it.
Over these taxes instead.
That's really, we can take and increase supplemental over on this, out of this side of their mouth. But putting a twenty five cent additional charge on this monthly cell phone bill is raising taxes.
I couldn't agree anymore, Steve.
So the people can pay three dollars a year over here, and what over here?
It's, it's all a shell game to leave the county with their hand in the cookie jar.
They don't want to raise taxes, but we're supposed to.
Yeah.
No, they want to consult with the state.
Well, that, that too.
That's for a different discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for the good.
Next item on the agenda, Michael Cunia, county engineer. Morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Great for water, just to be the special engineer in some of the contract, B thirty two contracts are really different.
Alright, so, um. You can sort of beat through two contract, that's free script for.
Dan?
Your specials. All right, you want to explain it?
Uh, B thirty two, it's an idle steel project, it's, uh, we're using a stockpile for a gruys that we've had for almost ten years. Uh, to fuel up the road, um, I'll talk a little bit more about it in my report, um. Bit test came in, very favorable, uh, bits, uh, all across the board, and the bid that came in was two hundred and twenty six thousand and change. Uh, we were estimating in-house somewhere around three hundred, so. So it's very favorable, the price of the, the emulsion binder is, is very low on the bid.
Bucket in quick.
Yeah, the first thing I thought of when I saw this, like, can we get them to do more, and it's just, you have timing and. Local funds don't facilitate that this year, so what we're trying to do is figure out how to, um. And hopefully next year we have, if not the same pricing, similar pricing on that, so that's, that's very good.
And you're also correcting those two problem corners on.
That, that is true, um, that's going to require asphalt patches, and I'll get that to the, that report, but we're going to put two foot shoulders on there to help reduce the amount of, uh, rock migration and then. Um, put a little more asphalt on the, uh. On the two point and two point seven and, and the drives. To help reduce the amount of rock migration on that road, that's super, super relevant. Top of my head, I might even be on, on that, uh, on the.
Quick.
On the picture, um.
Oh, that's a hundred, hundred feet.
Okay.
So. On both intersections, so.
That should help.
Yes, it's really things, uh, it's, I'd call it a little bit more than incremental, but. It's just, I'll be still gonna have a little bit there. Um, but that's, should be a lot better than it was.
How much rock? That stockpile, how much will be remaining after we do B thirty, B thirty?
Um, that's immediate survey. And that's all I can say, there's, that's kept an internal discussion, so stop by if you want to hear a little bit more. So, yeah.
Action.
Move to approve.
Yeah.
Anyone want to take action?
Move to approve.
Second. You're moving to second, you approved the B thirty two seal code project, any further discussion? Now, I know all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
And then, um. I had Andy review the employment contract, um, I have a final copy, I don't know if you have a chance to look at that. You want to discuss that? At this time?
I can't remember what was the last one we got.
It looks agreeable to you.
Yeah.
And how did you determine that, uh, spot in the matrix you're putting itself in?
Uh, that's my normal progression, um. But there is no added. Exceptions or anything else.
This one says C one.
Uh, yes. I'll verify that, because.
It's the one I printed, said C two on it, so.
That's not a sign, Michael. Does anyone have any questions for Mike?
It includes the force, just, just to be clear, it includes the forfeits, um, termination vote, and it, and it. I removed the, uh, use of the company vehicle as well.
Is it also forfeits on amendments to the contract?
The amendments on the contract, I reviewed that, and you brought that up, but that requires the board and the engineer to come to a agreement first.
Okay.
On a, on the end, origins of the contract, so. And that was in the original. Contract, I was like, I don't really want to mess with that too much. And I'll just have either Ben or myself reduce to the C one, because that's what it should say.
One thing. That I thought might be changed was sixty days, but engineer can terminate his contract within sixty days. But if we terminate it, we have to give you ninety.
I remember the point.
I just. It should.
They should be probably good at ninety.
Good for the gambler.
Yeah. I think that's. That's fair.
Okay, that. Maybe I should have gave you a call, but I just wanted to talk a little bit more on that.
Yeah.
Still approve it today.
Should be no.
Change.
Just write it down, like, if you're an idea, everyone will be making.
I would make a motion to accept the contract with the change to ninety days for termination.
No, verify the C one with, you're better myself on the.
Oh, I'm a major.
I'm a major.
Yep.
C one.
There we have motions, a second.
A second.
I have a motion in a second to accept the employment contract with the engineer with the change to ninety days over sixty. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Both, same side. We all have to sign this. It's too quiet.
Let's do the updates then, we'll talk to the free talk to the report as it goes through the updates here. Um it's the last meeting, this two weeks worth of report here. Uh when she counted the finalists for the build grants, uh W fourteen south of Port Axon was a submitted project. Uh no new information this week. No road flat car bridge study, there's nothing new this week, uh subdivision data gathered, uh starting starting working for this. Uh gearing out payment schedule this weekend. Uh project to cut into Corey Hill Road uh across from Bam Bam Pean to make the driver safer. Uh being coordinated with the city of Decor and Brunings, uh there's nothing new this week other than they did meet, I think on Thursday of last week. I've heard nothing from the city.
Oh man.
Um. Activities for rocking the roads is finished, this uh was finished not last week but before. The SS four A meeting was held, um safety action plan has been sent. The rough I passed off the rough draft you on first review, there's nothing changed, I will have to. Look at her as we can get her done, consultants. Um I mean, this weekend, uh I got a couple phone calls from the sheriff's office, they're up roads. Say eight, uh based on my recollection recollection, so. We were busy cleaning up roads this weekend. Um. That wasn't just sheriff's o- office, that was kids and citizens.
Yeah, I had a couple. First on Sunday night, last week was Sunday night, Wednesday afternoon.
So, yeah, that's so.
They're up, yeah, choice of you've been up about cutting trees.
He was a very busy man on Saturday. Um. Nesty Valley uh construction with four operators, it's supposed to continue this week. Uh although the weather is is not been favorable for us, um we're going to care. Uh progress before, I think, yeah, they sentenced the boards, um basic, the the cliff notes of that are. Um we had a hundred and seventy thousand dollar worth of labor that we were going to put into it and we're there forty-seven thousand dollars. In and we're about halfway through, so that should be good for the conservation, that's a good sign for the conservation department at this point. Um and that's just the labor, so the materials will be built, build them are still all included uh and and.
You have the equipment rental.
Yeah, equipment rentals and things like that, um so all those buildings still have to be handled by them, but just on our on our side of the. Coin gear ring and I call it a good job of being cautious and and. We're just slow because of the weather, so. I wanted to pass that update to y'all. Um. Bridge two forty-nine repairs were finished two weeks ago, uh the W twenty culvert installation north of A eighteen is currently under construction. Uh the road is closed, we're going to try to open it up uh here today and have that road be available throughout the week, this week. Um and then perhaps hopefully get started back up on the project next week. Um we have six culverts that are going to go in that's finalized between two weeks ago and today. Um. And then Bridge sixty-seven uh repairs uh likely follow W twenty. Um the DOT bridge engineers are looking to visit sometime this week or next, uh they put off last week's visit. For weather and then this week is obviously the weather is is bad, so I'm going to guess it's going to be next week, I have not heard from them. Um the. Whole on road then co-contract, I will be reviewing uh when we get done with the meeting here. Be my cat A uh this this. Still being held up, uh I didn't know word on that over the last two weeks. Um. And then I met with the Freeport Water District Board uh at six fifteen P M on Wednesday, June eleventh at Freeport Park, I wanted to talk. Through that, I think I've passed on some of the information, uh it's not most of the information to the board already. Um. Late May, uh the yard hydrant had its water shut off. I don't know where to begin on this, uh basically, as I understand, uh as I've come to understand the whole process. In the mid nineties, uh there was, I'll call it an agreement. That between Freeport Water and the county that put install that and it was tapped, it has not been metered since. Um. That's not usual, uh so usually the you want to put a meter in. Uh for, yeah.
I mean, by looking at it from a city standpoint, the water has to be metered, I mean. The city's big enough for electricity, pumping it and everything else.
And there's a couple of things on that, um we, I agree that it should be metered, um it should have been metered at the time, they. The. In a. In that vein, when when um that was installed, uh who pays for meter at that time? Comes into play and then the other thing that comes into play is um. The way. You know, one of the things that happens when when you build the infrastructure to put that in. Um usually for the wellhouse and for the uh the storage tank that's up the hill. Um usually there's a um surface use agreement, there's no surface use agreements uh. Where they can, so that they can access their designated access, so none of that has been installed um.
Those, so it could be unknown to us that there was some kind of handshake agreement where we would get water and they would get to use our.
That's that would be the implication, we don't, we don't know, it was never documented. Typically, when you put something with no meter, there's an agreement, that's that's where it's like, okay, um. You know. We want to, we want to have a discussion before water is turned off, so then then it's like, well, i- if not this, then what is? Freeport getting from us that's not paid for, I mean, that's kind of the the negotiation that we're having here. And so. I looked into the the agreements, I went through um board meetings from. Uh the mid seventies up through the middle two thousands. Uh went went through um talking to some of the old timers who had been working for the county. Um that that's how I kind of come with all this information um. I can speak more to this, but the uh offer that I had put on the table was that the. At the June eleventh meeting was that the county would pay half of the meter cost. And that Freeport would pay for half the meter cost, however, that needs to be metered. Another issue that you have on this is however it's metered, we get charged both water and sewage. So it would have been one reason why they didn't want to put the meter in at the time, I don't know if that's the case. Uh so that would have to be worked out, so that we're only paying for water, um this is just.
Page is that hydrant.
All the pages that hydrant, yes, and so that's why uh there is more negotiation in my mind, um that should be done on this because. Those things have not been ironed out.
What I would propose is that the county pay for the meter. As long as there's an agreement that we do not get charged and sewer on any water that's through that meter.
I would also propose that we start charging rent for the land that the.
Yeah.
The tanks it's on, if that's, there is no, we're looking at no agreement.
I'm not sure you can do that, there's a twenty-eight, I shouldn't say twenty-eighty, but um before this got turned over Freeport Water District, the county had. To establish the. Reservoir, the the tank that's up there and then it turned it over to the district to manage it. I I before you jump into that argument, let me take a closer look at that, but I think there. I think you'd have trouble arguing that you're entitled to rent, given the history of how Freeport Water District deceived.
Was there was there a easement access agreement in that?
When it comes in from the top, I believe, because we've preserved that easement with um. Some subsequent orders of um.
Is it reeks?
Reeks, they're like.
Like that's out there, so I. That may be an issue, but I don't think you want to act on it without further research.
And everything that Andy said, I, that is what I saw on the the water tank, the the issue is um. In terms of that would be the wellhouse, that that agreement has not been worked out.
Clarify for me, who 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 paid for those original facilities, wellhouse and tank?
That was a grant that was awarded in the nineteen eighties uh for the construction.
Most likely since Freeport isn't incorporated, the county was the, just like we did the Festina Sewer recently. The county was kind of the.
Project manager.
Driving, we we were their manager and knowing that their utility fees were going to pay for eventually, but that. We hadn't taken on until we could turn it over to them, and I think that's what Andy's implying is that this was done similarly. Where the county was probably involved in the construction and creation of that, or we turned it over to.
So the the tank was a separate time, so the tank is a separate time than the the wellhouse, the wellhouse is the one that established the Freeport Water District. And that's where, that is where um. Things were done really fast, uh it was done by our engineering back in the eighties. Um and and it's not really a grant, it's not a typical agreement, the, based on my research. It would be a surface use agreement or an access easement uh to the wellhouse would be what we would want if we were going to go down that road.
Seems to me the easiest thing would be is if they're willing to agree to just turn it on and not meter it and we'll give them. Write it all up officially and have it be the way it's been for the last thirty years to be official. Why not do that?
That's an option, I just like when and then like went to the negotiation table, I figured it was a a. A two-party problem, one for the county and one for the Freeport Water District, and that's why I went, say, you know, half and half.
It's unfortunate that it was just turned off without people sitting down and talking about it.
Very unfortunate.
Uh I would also think like in the city of Decor, you can get an ag meter, but it's not, you just don't pay the. That's standard.
That would be a.
Standard option, would would they would have put the meter in when they installed it, who would have paid for the meter?
That is not clear, uh and. I know the jurisdictions that I've worked in the past, um sometimes the the water district does that, oftentimes it is the owner.
And it could have very well been part of the grant process at the time when that they were installing it, that most of the cost was covered by grants or something and. Might have been this was added, it's kind of at the end of the project, hey, maybe we need water for the roads, who knows?
This was done in the, this was done in the mid nineties, so this was, this would have been somebody's idea, so mid eighties. Uh was when it was established and in the mid nineties, sometimes we're estimating sometime between nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-six. They tapped into this, ran a line. Put the yard hydrant in and nobody um.
How much do you use it? Just curious.
Uh. We're estimating anywhere between five thousand gallons per year, which is more than I had initially thought.
And you use it for like putting water on.
Filling up roadside water tank and we're filling up roadside water tank and we're filling up and then. Uh whenever there's lading equipment and everything like that, it's you don't want that, all that rock near the main shops, we'll clean that off as well.
It's not a lot of water.
No, and we don't.
Not.
And now, if we had a meter, we'd have to pay a monthly charge on the meter, whether we use water or not.
Yeah, typical in the in the cities is we use, cities charge like in Spillbit, it's like. Three or four of our incorporated cities charge out of their water districts about twenty, around twenty dollars a thousand gallons. For construction water that's coming, that's being used out of the system and that's it, there's no sewer charge, there's a water charge. And that's, that's all there is and that's, you know, and if it hadn't been for Winnebago County, there wouldn't have been any. Facilities for the Freeport Water District stepping in, just like we had to do with this time, and they're not incorporated.
Uh I'm, this is a board decision, so I'm just trying to provide information at this point, um but that is, that is a negotiation tact that I use and and. It feels in light of all the things, still. My preferred option is to figure out that out, um another um. Thing we have to figure out is what's the best way to get it meters, um a meter right on the line, are we talking about metering it from a building?
Hydrant meter, just like when we use, when a construction, any construction water tank that comes out into one of our incorporated cities.
That's the standard that we're looking at doing, but there was, there was discussion of making it attached to the rest of the. So. That would still have to be worked out after a decision by the board.
They manually read their meters or they have electronic?
I believe they manually.
They'd have to manually look at that one.
I don't want to speak for Freeport Water on this, so.
Cora is going to probably go to electronic.
We backed up and what started this whole thing?
Uh or why?
I don't mean in the initial agreement, like why did this come up and what was the reasoning for them to shut it off?
Uh.
That's a little water leak on us.
That's, that's a a little bit, basically our water was shut off. And that's the most I want to speak to publicly right now, it was just shut off without any notification to to myself, um and. I I had to deal with that, try to figure out the whys and everything else, so um.
So what are the likelihood we could do what Ben is suggesting and just do a formal agreement so that it's in writing?
I.
What we've been doing for the last thirty years.
I presented that as an option to to them, they did not want to do that on June eleventh, one of the things that's. The way it was done, I will speak to this, the way it was done, and maybe we're leaning towards this, there was no notification, I asked for it to be turned on. That was denied and then I, after a consultation with Andy. We decided that we should have a discussion in front of the board about what's happened. Um for you to decide what should happen and and that's where we're at right now, um. One of the things, the way it happened uh is against Iowa code, so. Trying to, trying to say, you know, be reasonable here and want to to um, the way it's supposed to work is. the way it's supposed to work is there's supposed to be a formal letter that says we will turn your water off, you have a month to reply. Um, and then
Is that the Iowa code piece you're talking?
Yes. And then the way it happened is, is they turned it off without notification. Um, they might argue there was some notification, but not to myself, who's it, or, or to the board, one or the other. And then, um, I asked that they turn it back on. At that time, you would have thought that, you know, if they hadn't done it correctly, they, they would have done it. They did, they declined to do that. And so that this is where we're at now, on that piece.
That month notice might be of your customer, but not paying for it. I'm not so sure that falls into it. Are you input on that end?
Yeah, I mean, the board just wants, uh, has their motion today authorized Andy and Michael to continue to negotiate and not leave in a couple of weeks on what where they've got, got some proposal or option or something, because right now you're just kind of guessing on what they might be willing or.
They took the hard line on, on June eleventh. They were gonna force the county to pay for the, the meter, is what they said. So for them to go back and change, that's what it would take, would be some kind of negotiation that way.
Do we need the meter? Do we need that hydrant? Can you just put a line off of your shop?
That, that, this, it is useful for, because the reason it's so useful is because it's got a high, it's high pressure, it's not, it's not valved anywhere. Comes straight from the, the storage tank, which has a lot of pressure. It makes cleaning and everything nice. So the limited use it has, it's, it is nice. So we do want it, um, at the end of the day, uh, it may end up being cut off.
Let's purchase a hydrant meter and they can read it and bill us for the water usage like is common elsewhere in the county. As far as putting in a meter that's billed monthly, I'm against it.
Otherwise, they can remove the line, dig up, and they can pull it out if they want, but I would buy, buy a pressure washer.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's whatever.
Getting pressure washers, the issue, Mark, it's, it's where it's located. They don't have all that gravel in front of the shop. It ain't the pressure, it ain't the pressure washer that's the issue. It's where it's located, what they use it for.
It's a nicety.
That gravel ain't in front of the shop and you, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta hose out to that.
Uh, I'm, again, this is a, I, I spent too much time, to be quite honest, uh, on this, um, for as much use as it gets. So I would definitely, I would say, just get a hydrant meter.
Meter or?
Pay for the water.
One-time payment every year.
It's a separate issue. Andy can provide the documentation to take care of what wasn't done in the past. And if we find some other issues out of it, then we'll deal with those as we find them.
We'll just pay for the water we use and don't meter, Chair. I mean, we're gonna buy the meter, we'll put it on here. So gallons we use this year, what is a gallon? Pretty cut and simple, dry and simple.
We do everywhere else.
Now you don't want to start running hoses and gashes across the yards and driving over them, you gotta roll them up and then, yeah. It'd be easier to work something out. Here's what it is.
So we'll be in touch on what it is we do going forward.
We need, we don't need.
But I guess we don't have a motion, but my, my direction from you guys is to get a, get a hydrant. If you get a, get a meter and, and
If they're agreeable.
Yeah, if they agree to it.
Well, they're gonna agree to it if we pay for it. That's, that's, that's
Get a hydrant meter that can't be the end of the world on that, I wouldn't think.
County-owned, county-owned meter.
Well, that's a cost savings to the county too, because you're not putting it in line where you're gonna have to go fit.
I mean, on a hydrant, it's used everywhere else. I think that will work. I'll, I'll work that out, yeah. You can look at that. I, I don't, the, one of the issues that I could not look into on, on the on the surface use agreement, um, or access easement, one or the other, um, is is you do it retroactively or not, I hadn't looked into that whole issue. Um, so that, that's just the, the kind of uses a negotiation leverage as much as anything at this point. And so
Probably should be cleaned up.
It's kind of like some of the easement issues that we want to clean up.
So I can run with that as well.
I would. If there needs to be a charge or whatever, I know we need to put that on.
All right, let's continue.
All right, what was it? Uh, three Ash crash machines, uh, will be put on auction. Uh, one tandem truck will be put on auction. And the other tandem trucks will be sold to the landfill, because we received our two trucks, uh, last week. So two out of the four have come in.
When was the last time you used those Ash crash?
Ten plus years ago. Um, there, there's been, there's some nervousness around that because those Ash crashes are, are really good at moving snow and, and we, so we'll have two of those still left over. Um, the deciding factor was the cost for tires on, on those Ash crash machines are looking at fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a piece. So they're sitting, though, that's, that's kind of
The difference with them is that they have snow thrower attachments, more attachments, so they can actually I remember them being used when the snow was so deep that they couldn't push it. So.
So, yeah, it's, it's not, uh, it's, it's, it's one of those things where we have more powerful blades, it's kind of the if there's nowhere to go to snow, I, that we'll have to deal with it.
Bring in the order and start digging it out.
What they do in the corridor.
Yeah, I mean, wow, but this is a lot longer road. Not a, 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 obvious solution.
We still have two, two of them left.
Yeah, we will have two of them left, so we can but we're talk, talking about a couple hundred thousand every, you know, fifteen years. So the tires, yeah, and that's assuming that they'll start off the run. That's the other thing. So. No, that's right. So that's, that's kind of the, the trade-offs there. Dura-Patcher, I've been trying to get that used, um, and it's on W twenty while the road has been closed. Us for safer, safer use of the Dura-Patcher, um, as, asphalt, uh, patchwork over the new culverts is gonna be priced similar to the B thirty-two project, um. Then the dirt patcher's gonna move to the Bluffton Road and the Bluffton, all the pavement around Bluffton. Uh, and then it'll move on to A eighteen. Uh, pricing for the B thirty-two asphalt patches will be procured the same time as the W twenty. Um, this will, this expanded shoulders will be done to limit the, the pebble migration that is happening on the roadway constantly, uh, creating a sliding risk to specifically motorcycles. Uh, and then outside of that, uh, we, you all approved the bid for the Otis Hill project. Thank you. Um, Bridge three oh seven is shaping up to be let in November twenty twenty-six. Uh, this was pushed back due to DOT shipload process. Uh, we still have not heard back from the DOT. We've reached out to them. Rich Troy E will be construction, will be again, construction in mid-July. Uh, county excavation to be monitored by Barrett Creek, uh, Army Corps of Engineers and the tribes is loosely set for July, uh, July one. Uh, Bridge one twenty-six will likely be let in November or December. Uh, engineer staff have the new regulator, the previous arrangement, arrangements of the old regulator being upheld with a new regulator, same as last week. Um, Franklow Road letting will follow Bridge one twenty-six. The project was activated, uh, as an FM fund-only project two week, three weeks ago now. Uh, the estimated cost was reduced from two point five million to two point nine million. To three point five to two point nine, excuse me. Um, and then three weeks ago, I was informed that the Iowa County Engineers Association Service Bureau Rate Committee received an additional thirty-two and a half million dollars. I talked about this, uh, two weeks ago and there's no official news on that. Um, so I don't want to speak prematurely on, on that, that, the updates.
Michael, was that, are, are we having shoulder failures on the pavement there in the Bluffton Road?
Um, the way I understand, uh, Whelton Road is, uh, there's a little bit of separation because they put shoulder and, uh, safety factor, a few different times, there's a joint there. And that's something we are actively looking at, uh, tract filling, um, with dirt patcher. So that's why it's going there after W twenty.
Right, do you have anything else, Chief Liam?
Sounds great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any news on that training that we have to take?
I have not heard back. Yeah, I've sent her emails, going in her court, but I'll remind her that we're starting Monday.
We haven't discussed this as a board yet, but Mark and I met with, uh, Economic Development last week about the further, further actions to, for the sale of the, the old DHS building on fifty-two. And they made a recommendation to us that we would consider putting the property in an open listing. Which I think would probably need your purview to know how we would actually do that and set that up.
You can put it into an open listing, but any sale would have to be subject to public hearing notices and approval by the board. Uh, and then the question becomes, are you going to do that for every offer you receive? Were you going to say that uh, that decision is, is whether to go that far is primary or preliminary board decision before, uh, before taking that step to the public hearing.
Or are we sitting right now, and if somebody puts a bid in on, how would it affect?
Right now, you, well, your last motion basically was that, uh, you'd add a reasonable bid or a bid you want to consider at that point, you would schedule a public hearing.
And that's essentially where you're going to go, I think, even if you do it as a, as an open listing.
Cause I have somebody I'm looking at it again today.
So whatever, so Mark has an option, uh.
And that's what I explained to them, and it's, if you put in, you can put in a bid offer and we can want to, we gotta hold a public hearing.
I, I don't, I mean, I think putting it as open listing is the same. But I think it, it allows realtors to expand the reach, I mean, to get it outside of Iowa. It is now on a national listing, but I need to promote it more regionally and locally.
Your, uh, your private individual may save you a couple percentage points on a, on a commission as well, but
um, the idea that Steve has and we are kind of in agreement would be nice if somebody, a new business would come in, uh, a local business buying it, uh, that would bring more job opportunities.
This went out there probably months.
Well, that's why we would promote it on open list.
So if we can expand the reach, you know, highest and best use is going to be something that attracts uh, uh, something new to the county, increases our tax base, and the, the rest of that is a, is a, is a good goal. Uh, if we don't make that, then obviously a sale is still a good goal. It's a reasonable, a reasonable offering, no doubt about that. I do think that, uh, if there's anything else that's required, uh, if you, if we have any other documentation needed, Andy, then provide it. Let's increase the reach. We may have an offer, we may not.
I'd like to see increasing the reach. That we can exhaust all of our energy in trying to find an outside corporation to get in there, an outside company. I agree with that.
Or the second, or the second option to me would be if we, it's not act ideal per se, but if we could uh, provide additional, uh, childcare options for other members of the county or commuters that come into, into, uh, into Decora. That would be another option. It's certainly not going to be a competition for support, the current one down by the hospital. But, you know, for theirs, but in fact, that's definitely that same statement. There's plenty of need, that's another option. But we don't have any of those, but the main thing is, let's get the reach out there and, and don't let it languish until next year.
Yeah, that's and I'm not gonna sit here and tell, we don't want nobody to tell by. I mean, that's what you were saying.
For saying highest and best use would be.
Highest, best use, which is not necessarily.
Somebody comes in and makes an offer.
But if the county has an opportunity to promote.
Hold it back on the taxes.
The county has an opportunity to go ahead or growth, well, outside.
I'm not gonna sit here, hear somebody.
Should we just, before doing that listing, see how this potentially goes this week and?
I don't think it'd make, would make a difference.
I just keep do, uh, yeah.
We keep promoting it however we can promote it. That's just adding the promotional option of an open listing, is the way I see it. Am I, am I correct, Andy?
So are you saying you're not selecting realtor promoter, you're putting it into a multi-listing service for all the realtors or how, how does?
Yeah, because we're not trying to, I, I think we run into a real conflict if we try to select a realtor and don't make it available for all. I mean, somebody, uh, that opens up a quandary in my opinion.
The advice we're given is that in an open listing, the realtor puts his so it's nothing on us. And, but they all have the opportunity to access the information and actively promote it.
So we may have to pull a listing, but, you know, my thought would be, uh, perhaps we could have Andy work with Stephanie Fromm and the Economic Development and get that expansion unless we see a need to be able to have something reviewed our next, our next committee. But get it, just go and get it out there. They'll have an answer for us next week instead.
It's been out there for I suppose, had two people maybe.
We've got kind of a passive advertising, you might say.
But I mean, the word's out there, the signs are, people know it's for sale.
Let's go back to the optics of things we decided to, decided to do things. If we can really show that we have done everything we can to get this out in front of people. And there, and there is no new company interest after we've done everything we can. Then if we sell it to a local, great.
That would be fantastic. If we have the opportunity to expand opportunities for Winnaish County, I think we owe it to the county to do that.
So do we need any, is, is it sufficient, Andy, to direct Stephanie Fromm to work with you to make sure that the listing meets the criteria we've talked about?
I think that would be the action one to.
Any, any objections on board?
You want to take an action, or do you just want me to list it as a consensus of the board?
I think you should take an action on it. I mean, if you're gonna actually put it on an open listing, I think it's enough that, uh, you should make a motion.
I would motion then, um, have Andy work with Stephanie Fromm to pursue putting a property as an open listing.
I'd, obviously, I'd second, second that.
To have the HHS building listed for sale. All those favors they are. Anything else for us, Andy? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I still have a few miscellaneous items, first of which are the cigarette and tobacco permits.
No, these are annual applications for sales of cigarettes and tobacco products for businesses outside the city limits. Get them, most businesses are, so you have a few, you have Farmers' Win Co-op, Uh Highland General Store. Harvest Farm Campground, the zipper and the Bluffton Campground and Bar.
I'd move to approve the permits.
Second that. Motion is second to approve the cigarette and tobacco permits, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Polls, same side. Next, we have the VA Commission appointment.
So, Fede sent you the letter with the recommendation by the VA Commission and that envelope contains all the applications and. Information about all the people that applied.
I'd move to approve reappointment of Rick Delarosa to the VA Commission.
Second.
Like a motion is second for the VA Commission appointment. For any further discussion, all those that are in papers, say aye. Polls, same side. She carries unanimous. Uh next up, Community Services Building Discussion.
I just put that on there, we're gonna have a look at. See what their rents, I mean, we're paying ten dollars down there for the public to go. But I don't want the square footage as for the other two that are left for Spectrum and Mentor's place, but. About to get it within a reasonable, with their electric bill and everything else, nothing's going down. Yeah, that's my take. And the electrical use at the food pantry, I don't know, there's no meter on it, I don't know how or. Maybe just talk and see if they'd be in favor of paying X many dollars a month for June, July and August a little. As the usage goes, doubles in three months, it's ridiculous, yeah.
Did we, there is a meter to see the amount they're using.
No, there isn't.
I thought we were.
We know there was, but there isn't, I've been down, we've looked and looked. No, I think there's nothing, there's nothing there.
That was, Sutton was gonna put that on it.
No, it wasn't, that was, that was another, another company, I don't.
They looked at it and there was no way they could figure out what.
The circuiting.
Circuiting goes where, how would you even meter it? Yeah.
That would extend since the electrical.
Yeah.
Wiring, it's kind of impossible.
So, that's my take, I mean.
And they may be open to.
Uh can we do a, can you, can you pull together some numbers of what's being paid the square footage?
Yeah.
Usages.
Yeah, you had that, had the square footage, I don't know about me.
Uh yeah, they did it from I I T department.
Well, we did the whole thing, invited the whole place up.
By piece.
Yeah. Cause when we did DHS, we then had the whole thing.
Yeah.
Everybody's percentage.
Give us a recap of utility costs and so forth and see where we are with that.
The June, July and August.
And bring it up, but discuss it next week, we brought the agenda.
Because when purchased the building from Spectrum and they sold it to us at the price they did, it was that we would try. To keep all of the tenants in there affordable. That was hard.
Well, we got it.
Affordable and losing money are two different things.
Yeah.
Well, I, that's what.
Within reason.
And that's when I said in time that you need to meter the usage of the.
But you can't.
Well, I mean, that's. There are reasons you can put on each of those units, but.
That's.
They're not.
Reusable.
They're not that expensive.
The biggest thing is air conditioner running now. Air conditioner's gotta run twenty-four seven just to cool that place down, well, if there's only two sets there, cause it's cooling. Probably half the building down. If they keep theirs at seventy, it's keeping the rest of that area, which doesn't need to be that cool, and you can't. There's only two sets of heaters in there, there's six in one and I don't know what's in the others, so there's. It isn't, uh, I mean, the building was built to be used all as one entity when it was built. Zoned, it wasn't zoned for whatever, and that's, that's the problem.
So maybe we could talk to them about raising the temperature slightly, a couple of.
Well, they gotta keep a certain degree for the food.
It's cold.
It's seventy degrees is where they gotta keep.
They have to.
That's what they're, that that's what they're, I was told. It's gotta be at seventy degrees consistent. That, that's what I was told, that's all I can say.
Oh, let's just figure out the square footage and compare it to what we're paying for public health and see where we're at.
On a, on a different note, there was a community services service project that was done and. I think Shirley had something to do with that, and it does look very nice.
It does, doesn't it?
Yeah, the plantings.
We've got two, I I we did two.
Yeah, you did the two areas.
It was fun.
Was Spectrum involved with it?
Uh Spectrum involved with it, about six of their clients came out and helped me plant that planter.
Thank you.
It was really fun, actually.
Thank you for doing.
Good, it it looked very nice, surely.
Thank you.
Committee reports.
I've handed out this Chris Willis Children's Center for Northeast Iowa Behavioral Health, they're on the table if we'd like them. They're having an open house on uh July thirtieth from five thirty to seven for the community. Free ice cream provided, it's suitable, and if you guys have time to go down for that at all, between five thirty and seven, it is worth your time. They've done a really good job in that building and it's a.
Next Monday.
It's a good space for the kids of this kid, the whole region. So, please put on your calendar and plan to go.
Um I'd go back to the electric usage and maybe services, I think we really should look at trying to do solar.
You don't want to put solar in that flat roof.
I don't think we've got.
There is.
Structural, I don't know.
Yeah. There isn't enough, there is enough slope on that roof, go on, we had enough trouble with the water and stuff leaking on there, we did, so. I don't want to go disrupting that roof anymore.
We've had, there have been a lot of leak problems in it.
Lot of leak problems.
There's potential to, there would be potential to cover the, the building out to the street. With a, like they do with a pergola with the panels on top of it. The bank did that in the parking area. That all has a sudden exposure, so there is a potential to a raised one that's, would provide a canopy also. Entrance there.
You're, you're talking about on the.
On the food pantry.
Well, we'd like to get some information on that.
See what comes.
Cause I mean, people are still, obviously they're putting one in now, Rotogas is doing two big projects out there, so there is still money out there, and I think. It's worth pursuing that, I know uh the food pantry had looked at and was going to talk to. One of the local contractors about it, but I don't know if they've ever met with them to look into, but if we could do it, I think it would.
I mean, they'd have to come to us first, they can't.
Yeah, Tony got.
It's our property.
Tony got a call from some contractor and he, I mean, he just referred him to talk to.
They, they can't, they can't, it's not their property, they can't go put one on them.
Wait.
No, but they. They gotta come talk to us.
That's, they would bring you the numbers.
Yeah.
And they would say yes or no.
They gotta come talk to us first.
Well, let's talk about it and tell them that they should pursue it then, we just kind of said they should.
We just back up a little bit, cause I don't think anybody's paying, they're gonna put up solar without our permission. Jumping to conclusions here, they're just getting numbers, it'd be great if we could look at that kind of project on the community services. For the long run savings, so nobody's doing it without.
We're still saving fifteen hundred dollars a month at the recycling center. And our electric.
We haven't gotten.
We have not gotten a rebate.
So it just doubles the time will pay off, but you're still gonna have a payoff in the long run, so.
If you want to get numbers. The uh, on the, on the courthouse work that's being done, we're. They're in the process, they ran into some problems upstairs in the, in the main courtroom, of course, I think you anticipate that would happen. And uh so it's still continuing, they did, uh they are replacing all of the. Lighting fixtures in the main courtroom and we are, and that did qualify, we've got some alliance rebates are coming in out of that, so I think the total end up. Cost would run eighteen hundred dollars.
It's looking really good.
And so there, and they did have a problem with, with the air conditioning duct that had to be just raised up about one inch. That was down, and they had, it was being supported up there by the grid with two by fours. Very unusual.
It looks really good though, and so does the floor.
Yeah, so they've got, and if you have that floor and the stairwells that have been, on the recoating of that looks really good. The stairwell was, I think, to me, one of the most striking changes of how the appearance is, the uh. We are, uh there's carpet ordered uh for the library area of the judge's chambers in the back. And uh and then she'd ask that we also proceed this next year with, with the repainting and there's, and it's well overdue, well overdue. There doesn't appear to be any, we did have uh. Again, some look on it, I don't know that it's, the guy came back up. On stock with it, we haven't seen any more water yet. Mark and I could, are available to go crawl again if we need to, right, Mark?
This might be the week.
Yeah.
It could be, it could be, it'll cool down, it'd be better, but uh that seems to be.
Yeah, that attic could get a little wobbly.
We're hoping that as we move into this next year, that in the budgeting that we've set, that we'll be able to replace it. Carpeting in the main courtroom, cause that is looking. Pretty frayed. And I'm hoping that John, well, perhaps Judge Parrish will seek out, since she's not really. A fa- uh in favor of, and does she prefer those, the old church benches that are the gallery seating? Uh that maybe she will pursue to see if the state would provide some new chairs rather than the county. Well, we can always try.
Try.
Otherwise, those benches work.
Don't want to make it too comfortable.
Uh we had a security board meeting. Working on some of the upgrades that were asked, uh camera system is going to be changed to the system that was put in out of recycling. Facial recognition and uh new lighting on the outside to cover the dark areas. Uh there's a few other things, but with that camera system. Uh dispatch will have the ability, if they get a call, to just punch the button, they can check any one of the cameras. So, that's kind of, Tom's got all of that coming.
Well, we did, uh we, if you've seen, of course, where we closed off these old stairs, that's all completed and the. Sidewalk repairs and so forth around the corner up here and the rest of the front of the courthouse, there's some more repairs that'll occur into this next fiscal budget. Uh one of them is the column down there, all of the columns that support this, this retaining wall around this corner of the courthouse have been repaired over time. And that one requires more repairs and plaster repairs to make that one column down there match, and so. Hubcut who did this original work will be continuing in that as we go into this next year, so that.
Note, there's gonna be a lot of ballons put in, some with the door up there, some back here.
Yeah.
Whoever considered putting that just a handrail on the front main steps of the courthouse.
I mean, are you talking about the main, the stairs that go up to the unused entrance up there?
And it's used at Norishast every year, um I just wondered if we ever wanted to put a handrail on both sides for people to use both sides of that.
I would say that's the only time.
Yeah.
I'm gonna find a discussion that I know, and we actually, there's to be a chain across there, I don't, it's not, it's closed.
Yeah, on the top, maybe it was a plastic chain or something at the very top.
I don't even remember.
Oh, I thought you meant there used to be a chain on the right.
Like there used to be, or a sign at least, that the bottom says that they aren't for you, people.
Well, there's a few acts.
No, but some people walk up the main steps to get over to the door from the main street side. Up those steps and around the building to that.
Oh, no, that, yes. Now that I'm talking about, um to get from the sidewalk level up to.
Of Main Street. Up to the main plaza area and around the building.
And that does get used quite a bit, that I know what the.
How many steps, is that about three or four steps?
Oh, no.
No.
No, all the way up from.
Oh, all the way up, yeah.
Maybe.
From Main Street, so then there's a big long ramp, and then there's more steps.
But the, the main steps from the sidewalk on Main Street up, and then you come around the corner to the main entrance to the. The only entrance to the corner, I just wonder if we've ever considered putting a handrail on both sides of that.
Not that I know of.
I don't know, I would, I would say probably.
We'll take a look.
The, the width of it, I would say we're probably better off to put a handrail in the center.
Right, or the center.
If so.
I think there are rails on the upper set of steps.
I can't have to walk out.
They're gonna put one on it, it's a little pad.
Uh no, no plan for it, there's, there's zero, the only thing that it's even there for is to accommodate. Emergency stair that comes from the bar.
Oh, okay.
Of the, so it'd be the balance that they, we talked about enhancing the entrance there as part of that, trying to incorporate.
It was briefly discussed. But uh at this point in time, we figured just going with just the ballons, two ballons by that door on each side of the sidewalk. I think was the discussion that was gonna get priced out.
Are the ballons up by the main door?
How long was for? Uh historic place? Can you put it on to the building, that was part of the discussion? Kind of, well, we'll just go ahead and put the ballons. You know, it would work, yeah, two steel posts and you had an awning or something else.
Duck boat, like a pergola running out, some benches underneath.
But that's, that's where the concern came was.
So it wouldn't be a natural, it's a great building, it would just identify. With a couple of benches underneath there, so people can't dive across it also. Right now, it's like, I think it is hard to find the entrance to the building.
Alright, do you want to have anything else? Consent. We have that done, buddy.
Alright.
Minutes, flames. Uh liquor licensed for pinters, gardens and pumpkins, VA monthly report. I have.
Most still approved.
She was second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor, say aye.
I have uh fiscal update on committees, I've uh called this afternoon and CSS. On Wednesday, and then it's the sixth county meeting on Thursday.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Out there, all those in favor, say aye.
It was fine.
No, no, that's just.
And then the uh. The VA Commission.
We got one, sure.
Yeah, that is capital D, capital L, capital R.
Down to just one.
That's it? Okay, sounds good, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.